Hey, we'd like to call to order the Town of Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission August 26, 2024 meeting. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Ms. Strain.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Blowski is absent. Chairman Darpino.
Here. Next up is the approval of the August 12, 2024, meeting minutes. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gold. Are there any comments or corrections? Okay. I had two. Line seven and 14, we should add the word "virtual" next to Mr. Laflamme and Mr. Henry's name. We've been doing that as a consistent thing on the meeting minutes. And then line six, 78, 118, 119, and 152, just strike the word "acting" in front of Chairman. And that was it. Get a motion to approve the amended minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Khan.
Second.
Second by Ms. Strain. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The August 12, 2024, meeting minutes are approved. Next up, we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing for the amendments to the zoning code regarding short-term rentals. Ms. Bergami, could you please read the hearing?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to the Code of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, and the applicable provisions of the town law of the state of New York, a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna in the Town Board Meeting Room at 1 Niskiuna Circle on the 26th day of August 2024 at 7:00 PM to consider the following amendments to Chapter 220 zoning of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna. Amendment Section 220-4 to add definitions for change in ownership, rental, short-term rental, hosted short-term rental, and unhosted short-term rental. Add Section 220-32.8 entitled Short-Term Rentals to include a purpose for short-term rental regulations, requirements for a permit, requirements for a permit application, procedures for filing an application, requirements for display of permit and notification, requirements for the short-term rental, regulations on limits for unhosted and hosted short-term rentals, regulations for complaints and violation procedures, regulations for appeals, and regulations for penalties for offenses. A copy of the proposed zoning code amendments will be available for inspection at the Planning Department in Niskiuna Town Hall and can be viewed at the Town website under the Public Hearings tab and will be shown electronically during the public hearing. If you wish to express an opinion regarding the public hearing, you may do so at the above-mentioned time and place. If you cannot be present, you may request a virtual login to the meeting by emailing lrobertson@niskiuna.org or calling 518-386-4531, or you may set forth your opinion in a letter which will be made part of the permanent record. Please note that there is a five-minute time limit for each speaker at the public hearing, and submitted letters will not be read out loud at the public hearing, but such letters will be included in the minutes and added to the record. The Planning Board and Zoning Commission of the Town of Niskiuna will hear all persons interested during the aforementioned public hearing. By order of the Planning Board of the Town of Niskiuna, New York, David Darpino, Chairman, Planning Board and Zoning Commission.
Okay, thank you. So the public hearing is now open. Please state your name and address for the record.
Presentation.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Ms. Gold, as the project lead or co-project lead, wanted to do a quick presentation with some slides to explain some of the definitions that is in the packet that you have here for the short-term rentals. Go ahead.
Yeah, this is largely aimed at people who haven't been following this, because the ordinance itself is like 12 pages long. So briefly, the question is, why are we looking at adding legislation on this now? It's because short-term rentals, abbreviated as STRs, are increasing in number. We have nothing in the code that addresses them, and we've had a lot of comments from one neighborhood reporting that there have been undesirable impacts from one STR located there. The definition of the short-term rental, right here, rental of any dwelling unit in whole or in part to any person, persons, or entity for a period of less than 30 consecutive nights, including any residential building or apartment, single or two-family dwelling, condo, townhouse, guest house, cottage, whatever, any kind of a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit. Neither timeshare units, hotels, motels, motel, bed and breakfast, establishments in school or nonprofit dormitories, nor your use of a short-term rental by a record owner of a property shall be considered to be a short-term rental for purposes of the zoning code. So we're trying to zero in really on the short-term rentals. We've got two types. Hosted, short-term rental property at which an owner of the property resides and at which an owner of the property stays overnight during the entire term of each short-term rental of the property. Unhosted, short-term rental is simply one where an owner of the property does not stay overnight during the entire term of each short-term rental. The regulations, oops, I think I skipped a page. Okay. No. Regulations include the permit requirements, the application procedures, where each type of short-term rental would be allowed. Unhosted, short-term rentals would be allowed only in RP, residential professional, and CN neighborhood commercial districts. Hosted STRs would be allowed in all zoning districts. Regulations also include what limitations on that use apply, and there's complaint violations, enforcement penalties, and appeal processes. And basically, if it's a continuing problem after two violations, the permit can be withdrawn.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gold. Okay, the public hearing is now open. This is specifically for the short-term rentals. There will be privilege of the floor later on in the meeting, so anyone that wishes to speak on this item can come up to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and we'll listen to what you have to say. Thank you.
Okay, I don't like speaking, but this is important. My name is Michelle Melnick. I live at 901 Inman Road. Let me thank the Planning Board, Zoning Commission, Laura Robertson, for their work on the proposed short-term rental regulations in our town. Our home is directly across from the entrance to Milton Keynes Drive, where one of the weekend rentals are. The average number of vehicles just this month has been 11 each weekend, except for on the August 17, there was less. Now, how many people do you think is in the house when you have 11 and 12 cars there? I have seen school buses there picking up people, large buses, small buses, three and four SUVs picking up people, and we're just out doing our gardening in front of our house, and we just, because we could see it, it's right there. Since these short-term rentals cannot be shut down, the strictest possible regulations must be adopted. The hosted, short-term rentals where the owner must be on the premises at all times, limiting the number of the vehicles to three to four, limiting total number of people to eight or less, a minimum of seven nights, that will stop our weekend parties. Guests of occupants are not allowed. We need clarification as to who to call. Are we calling the town police, or are we calling the building department? On bookings.com, the host, Joe, who is not the owner, boasts this is a tranquil and peaceful neighborhood. He states no parties or events allowed. This property does not accommodate bachelor or bachelorette parties or similar parties. Well, fellow neighbors of the Town of Niskiuna, Joe's rules have all been broken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Scordino. I live at 1240 Milton Keynes, next door to the 1230 Milton Keynes short-term rental. Thank you to the board for listening to me again and for all of your efforts on this code and to Laura as well. So I can tell you all from my family and I's firsthand experience, from a short-term rental perspective, this is not good for the Town of Niskiuna. After being occupied for more than 20 years, the house next door was sold at the end of October and has not been lived in and has been rented out since November. You know, I would just echo what was just spoken, that every weekend, it's been rented throughout the summer. Sometimes renters check out on a Sunday, and more renters check in that same Sunday afternoon. There's been weeks when we've needed to call the police two or three times for noise complaints in the same week with different guests. So, you know, on these various listings, Airbnb or bookings, you know, they're allowed to have 16 guests, but there's been countless weekends where we've counted 15 or even 20 cars and people arriving by taxis and Ubers. So who knows how many people are actually there. We've called Airbnb. The town basically said, we have nothing on record and we can't help, so call Airbnb. So we've called them a number of times, and they say, okay, we'll look into it. There's no parties allowed, and that's what they've told the town. We're not having parties. But I don't know what else you would call that when you're having that many people. Just to give a look at some of the disruptions we've seen throughout the summer, there was some kind of ceremony where they required so much stuff that they needed a U-Haul truck to carry the equipment in and out. There's hibachi dinner in the driveway. There's fireworks going off. People thought it was gunshots. Again, the police needed to get involved, broken glass in the street, people out in the street drinking late at night. And then it's just the day-to-day occurrences of where you just don't know when things are going to get crazy, when the party is starting and when all the cars are going to show up. And we have little kids that are outside. We're trying to keep safe and trying to keep out of the road, but you never know when there's going to be a bunch of cars showing up. We live on a cul-de-sac, and prior to this, knew every car that was driving up and down the street, and now we never know like what's going to happen. So, short-term rentals are just not something that is good for Niskiuna or makes this a more desirable place to live. It's, you know, if we had known that there was going to be a short-term rental next to our house, we probably wouldn't have bought the house. So I think that if we're seeing more and more of this throughout the town, it's going to make it a less desirable place to live. So my suggestion, once again, to the town would be to not allow short-term rentals at all in the residential zones. I know that our legal team has suggested that that's not possible, but I would just ask to be like totally, totally sure of that, because I think when we look at these definitions and everything, like that is the big break-off point, is where we're allowing this. So if there is going to be a handful of towns in the country that do not allow it in any zones, or maybe just in the, whatever those two are that we're allowing, the unhosted, then let Niskiuna be one of those towns where we're just super restrictive. It's not a tourist destination. This is where people come to raise their families. And in addition to trying to just support the community that we've all worked to create, it just eliminates the town from trying to enforce these codes. So with that said, I am in 100% agreement. That's something that needs to be on the books, because we can't keep having the short-term rental that's happening to us next door. And so I think we definitely need something. So as the code, as it's written, if there needs to be something that's allowing short-term rentals in all residential zones, I completely agree that it needs to be hosted and that the owners need to stay during that time. I think there needs to be a good way to figure out how to enforce this and to make sure that they're really there. And then the two main suggestions is, I completely agree with having a minimal rental time period, because if you have it where it needs to be seven days, you're going to eliminate these people who are here every, you know, day or two, just to come together and have a party. Secondarily, I mentioned this last time, but I think we need to have less than eight people. I think there's no reason to have eight people. And if you need defense for that, then you say it's in the Niskiuna comprehensive plan that we want to support the community. We've had an experiment with our house next door, and it is not good for the community. It's not good for the neighborhood. So it's not, the last thing is just that, it's not only the weekends when there's 15 cars. Sometimes it's the three to four-car nights that is disruptive. They're out late, and they're waking you up when you're trying to get sleep and go to work the next day. And one of the things that I think is a problem with the code is that they have 60 minutes to amend whatever situation is happening. And if you're calling, if you're woken up and you're calling the police and you're asking, you know, for this to get quieted down, it is really hard to go back to sleep. And like each of those occurrences, even though they might not be some crazy party, it is really disruptive. So that's why I think you can't have eight people. I think you need to have like four people or six people, something smaller. There's no reason to have it to be eight. So in closing, I appreciate all of your efforts to make this code happen, and I think that we need to create the most restrictive code that we can to continue to support the Niskiuna community into the future and try to keep it as great as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else present wishing to speak at the public hearing? Okay, so no one else present. I will ask Mr. Henry if there's anyone online that wanted to talk about the public hearing.
We do have some people online. Would any of them like to speak for the public hearing?
You may need to unmute yourself to speak.
Stop sharing. One more time, I see a couple applicants for some of the projects on the agenda tonight. Is anyone joining us virtually here to speak for the public hearing on short-term rentals? Okay, Chairman Darpino, I don't believe we have anyone. We did receive one email from Patrick Gray this morning at 8:10 AM, so that will be put in the meeting notes and distributed to the planning board.
Correct, and Mr. Gray resides on Milton Keynes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Last chance for anyone to speak on the public hearing before we close it. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to the next item, which is privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is now open. Anyone can speak about any planning and zoning matter. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Nadia Rockwell. I live at 2488 Brookshire Drive. I'm here regarding 929 Pierce Road. My husband Mike and I have lived at 2488 Brookshire Drive with our two kids for seven years. Mike and I grew up in Niskiuna, and we used to feel proud to be a part of this community. The construction of 943 Pierce Road in 2020 and our attempts at working with the homeowner slash contractor at the time, along with the town to rectify the massive water damage neighboring properties had to endure, during and after the construction, quickly made us realize favoritism and politics trumped the properties of normal residents in this town. A town engineer told us at one point that due to all the recent FOIL requests, he didn't have time to deal with us anymore. That comment pretty much sealed the deal with us that the town had zero interest, admitting that the approved plans were flawed, and zero interest in working with the affected properties. Countless pictures and videos were shared with the town that make normal people who view them shocked that this damage continued to be okay. Depending on who you speak with in the town, they know it's not okay. After years of harassment from the owner slash contractor of 943 Pierce Road and the nonexistent help we received from the town, in 2023, my husband Mike and I put in 300 feet, 350 feet of drainage on our property. We spent tens of thousands of dollars to fix a problem that we did not create. We currently have new neighbors at 943 Pierce Road who we don't want to leave, but they are dealing with the aftermath of their poorly constructed home that I know is very overwhelming. Mike and I still get an overflow of water from their property, both from sump discharge and rain. Mike and I also have the sump discharge from 939 Pierce Road right on our property line aimed towards us. I mention these two properties because the perception is that the town is okay with all the extra water aimed at our property. We can't take on any additional water from 929 Pierce Road. 929 Pierce Road is in our backyard. This summer of 2024 has been the first time in several years that our kids have been able to use most of our property to play. Although we are not under constant water due to our drainage system now, we still see the effects from having two homes with sump discharges aimed our way and close to our property. The effects of the water on our property multiplies when it rains, and even the slight, when it rains even the slightest, due to no proper drainage system, a poorly maintained swale, along with cheap sandy soil all around at 943 Pierce Road. We strongly urge you to walk our property and see what's currently there. We do not want to suffer through another poorly engineered home build where the town thinks additional water aimed at our property is okay. There should be zero effect on neighboring homes with the new build. However, we have been through multiple ill effects from previous new construction and have zero faith that the town is able to do what is needed to safeguard current properties. Thank you.
My comments kind of piggyback onto Nadia's. My name is Denise Cashmere. I live at 949 Pierce Road, which is two properties down north from the proposed subdivision at 929 Pierce Road. I've lived at this address for over 35 years, and the house has been standing for over 120 years. I'm a retired Schenectady County planner, where I worked for over 30 years, so I understand all of these processes. Sadly, I do not have much faith in the town that this project would have proper oversight. Drainage issues on Pierce Road have long been known. I directly experienced hardship when the new dwelling was built next to me at 943 Pierce Road a little over two years ago. Numerous code violations and drainage concerns were cited over the course of the two years. My basement and yard flooded. After a $12,000 French drain system, two sump pumps, and expensive planting of trees, I still have, I'm still battling water issues. I have sections of my yard that I can no longer use. I have groundwater seeping up through the floor of my garage, and remnants of this worthless swale that was required for this project seeping into my driveway. Note that the swale was improperly constructed with cheap sandy soil and has never been maintained. The offending grinder builder resident next door has moved on. Why only can I assume to make more money and reap more havoc somewhere else in Niskiuna. New owners have now moved into this property and are suffering greatly with drainage issues. I leave you with the summary words of your town planner to me and my neighbors as we were enduring and trying to solve these drainage issues. She astutely stated that "the natural flow of water is downhill." Well, we're still downhill, and we cannot take on any more water or damage to our properties. Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance for privilege of the floor? Okay, Mr. Henry, do we have anyone online wishing to speak on privilege of the floor?
Yes, we have a few people online. Is anyone here to speak for privilege of the floor? Please unmute yourself. I believe, judging from the names, Chairman Darpino, that these are all applicants online.
Thank you. All right, and do we receive any correspondence on any open items?
No, we have not.
Okay. So we're going to close privilege of the floor and move on the agenda to unfinished business. First up is the Resolution 2024-24. This is a resolution for site plan approval of a tenant change to Community Bank at 420 Balltown Road. And I will read the resolution. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan and zoning board of appeals approvals, and therefore hereby approves the site plan and tenant change with the following conditions. Number one, any and all proposed signage for the property shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Board at a future date. Two, a significant surplus of parking lot area, approximately 26 extra parking spaces, surrounds the site. The applicant shall continue to work with the landlord and planning office to significantly add to and refresh existing landscaping. Three, prior to issuance of a building permit, final landscaping plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Niskiuna Tree Council. There is no project lead, so could I please get a motion?
I'll move it.
Ms. Gold? And I will second it. Do we have anybody here from the applicant online?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Clark, can you bring him up?
Good evening.
Go ahead.
I just want everybody to know that we are looking forward to adding landscape amenities to the properties, as I have discussed with Laura, and I've sent a plan of what we intend to do. We're already purchasing landscape materials, because I want to set it in the fall before the freeze, but after the hot weather, and we're looking forward to making our property improved.
Thank you.
I also want to thank everybody at the town for so helpful with getting this project moved forward.
Good, yes. And the new plan that was included did show several trees that were added to the green space buffers on both sides of the building, some plantings around where the drive-through turn is, and then there was a couple aerial views that showed Xs where proposed plantings were going to go.
Yes, and those plantings, I also supplied a list of the, off of the tree committee's approved list of plants and trees that we are going to put in those areas to make them nicer. Of course, like I said, it's our plan to do this work in the fall, during the fall planting season, so we can make sure that these things will survive.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strain.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Darpino, it's a flashback.
Okay, motion carried, and congratulations, Mr. Levy. We wish you the best of luck on your project and look forward to seeing the site improved.
It'll be quick. Well, not right now. I'm in Columbus. It's 100-plus degrees out. Won't be that quick today.
All right, appreciate it. That's the end of unfinished business. We are going to move on to new business. First up, we have Resolution 2024-30, a resolution for sketch plan approval of a two-lot subdivision at 1045 Palmer Ave. Read the resolution. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that this Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby classify this sketch plan as a minor subdivision as defined by Chapter 189 of the Code of the Town of Niskiuna, and be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant sketch plan approval for the concept subdivision drawing entitled Request for Subdivision Lot 50.6-5-22 by Sandra Griffin, aka Sandra Demond, stamped, received July 10, 2024, Planning Office, Niskiuna, New York, with the following conditions. One, sketch plan approval is a conceptual review of the proposed lot division for the purposes of classification and preliminary discussion as described in the Town of Niskiuna zoning sections 189-6 and 189-22. The location of proposed boundary lines, infrastructure, utilities, and improvements are subject to change during the environmental review, engineering, public hearing, and subdivision review process. Two, the sketch plan does not meet existing zoning requirements, and the minor subdivision application will require review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Mr. Khan, can I get a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Khan?
Second.
Second by Ms. Strain.
And the applicants also here. As we've discussed, you know, with Ms. Griffin, and thank you, Clark, Mr. Henry, for putting together the detailed steps, right? This is a complex application where this is the first step by... By accepting this sketch plan, the planning board now initiates a process with the zoning boards of appeals because the existing lot as it's there will require some variances and further down the road, any building on the new lot that's created, if it is accepted to be created, will also require variances before any substantial kind of building can be placed in that property. There's also a the Niskuna Town and Niskuna Planning Board and Planning Department is the lead agency, but there's also another agency, which is the Schenectady, City of Schenectady Planning Board and Planning Department that will have to go. So I'll take the action. Clark, thank you very much for putting this document together. I'll take the action to arrange for a meeting between Ms. Griffin, myself, and, you know, at least you, Clark, from the Planning Board of the Floor, if Laura says that'd be great. We'll try to do that this week. I did speak with Ms. Griffin earlier and got some times during the week that could actually work and we'll go forward with the process, try to make clear where all the steps are and I'll, you know, we'll hand this document over to you in a, you know, printed form so that we can go through that checklist.
All right, well, thank you for your time and your consideration. I know it's not a one day turnover kind of thing, but it was important to get the process started, so I appreciate your time that you put in.
Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
I'll just note, my understanding is that this simply allows further consideration of the application and it should not be taken as we're necessarily going to recommend the variances be granted or anything else.
Yeah, please come to the microphone. I'm understanding that this is a preliminary approval of at least the plan, but as we go on, the more detailed information you have will be the final judgment on whether or not this can go through. Is that what you're saying to me?
That's what I was trying to say, yes.
Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Because I really have not made up my mind on a final determination. I think most of us are at that same point.
Okay, well, as the chart shows, it's many, many steps and this is the first one of several, so I think, you know, in fairness to Ms. Griffin here, we'll move this on to zoning and I'll have a vote on it. Okay, if there's no further discussion, Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strain.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman D'Arpino.
Aye, and motion carries. Okay, we'll be in touch with meeting and what the next steps are. So that concludes unfinished business. We'll move on to, I'm sorry, that concludes new business. We'll move on to discussion items. First up is the amendments to the zoning code, which are now co-leads of myself and Ms. Gold. So, Ms. Gold, I'll turn it over to you, you did the summaries.
I thought we might have a few more speakers than we did, but I will note that speakers really don't think we should have unhosted residential zones and I happen to agree with that. I think unhosted should not be allowed in the RP zone. I will note the professional uses came after the residential use was established in those zones and I don't think it's fair to the property owners there. So I would like to see this go forward without the RP being allowed to have unhosted.
Can I just be clear on as to where we are in the process right now? If when we are concluded with our discussion, where do we stand then? You're recommending it to?
The Town Board.
Town Board.
Okay, so it's being recommended to the Town Board in a positive fashion to consider it, to consider those amendments?
That would be the goal because we clearly need something in the town code.
Okay, thank you.
But I would like to delete the RP from the unhosted.
So part of this process is the information that we get from the public hearing, other feedback that we receive here is something that we can use to construct that. We will then fine tune this and then come up with a document that we recommend to the Town Board.
And if it's a substantive change, then Council's office will advise us probably that we need another hearing.
Potentially, yes, depending on the changes.
Okay.
So in the spirit again of amendments, right, and we had left this off at the last meeting, right? And I provided the supporting documentation, which I think made it into this packet also. I think at the end of the day, the code as written is very heavy on complaint-driven enforcement. And we've actually got a little bit of an experience with that from what's happening in the current short-term rental, you know, it's been the subject of our meetings. So the proposition that I made to restrict hosted short-term rentals to residential, professional, rural residential for the reasons based on lot size and commercial highway, gonna have a hard time understanding why that could ever constitute a ban. In addition, it allows us to at least take a phased approach to making this something that is practiced in the entire residential districts of the town, right? So to say it simply, we actually don't know how this proposed code is going to work. And to have it be something that is applicable in all residential districts, it's going to be very difficult for us to actually come back from that point as opposed to it's some fantastic success, it lends to the spirit and nature of the residential, I'm being a little facetious there, aspect of Niskuna and we want it everywhere, right? So that's my final, right, I've kind of held the same position from the beginning. I think anything I'd say further at this point is repetitive. I think having it in those three zones as mentioned represents a good initial foray into some extent testing out our ability to implement this code in a way that preserves the nature of our town out of the comprehensive plan and allows us to understand what exactly are the enforcement level liabilities that we're signing up for. So in summary, my amendment to the code is as stated in the document that I had submitted is, just to enter it into the record correctly. So my amendment is that section two, G point two A should read, hosted short-term rentals as defined by zoning code section two twenty dash four shall be permitted in all zoning districts except R one, R two, and R three.
I will contend as I have from the start. And while I know it's not a popular opinion and I am repeatedly reminded it's not, they don't belong in Niskuna, I would root for a ban because I think I don't, they don't belong here. And knowing that that's not anything that this board is going to move forward with in that manner, I would defer to Mr. Khan's amendment.
I was just gonna ask Elena, so, I mean, we've had the public hearing on this draft or this version of the code and now Mr. Khan has, I believe, has he made an amendment or are you?
He's proposed an amendment.
Okay. So maybe we need some help with what our next step is here.
Well, I would suggest that the project leads get together and determine if there is going to be any additional amendments. If there are, I would say that what's being proposed is material. We would hold another public hearing and have to call for a public hearing and have another public hearing before you finalize it and it goes to the Town Board for consideration and a public hearing there.
Thank you. May I ask a question, Council?
Go ahead.
Do you think this amendment that's proposed would put the town at risk of lawsuit?
I indicated previously, yes, I believe other staff from my department has also indicated the same thing after our research. This board's prerogative, what it wants to put forward though.
Including the resident, if we included residential, rural residential zoning, right? You know, Laura ran the numbers and we find that there are. Where does she have it?
So we'd have a three percent of properties in the Town of Niskuna would be?
Eligible.
Eligible.
Eligibility, yeah.
And it actually goes counter to the whole basis for the RR zone, which was a, this was land that needed additional protection, not less. So adding that and taking out the others just doesn't compute for me.
The zones, the zoning code proposal as currently written also allows short-term rentals unhosted in the RR zone, right? Nothing changes for the RR zone relative to the code as written.
But you're saying you want to restrict it from other zones that we didn't deem as concerning and allow it in the RR? And I just don't agree with that. And I believe we can discuss it and since there is a motion to amend and I believe Ms. Strain basically seconded it, there should be a vote.
No, it's on for discussion, it's not on for a motion or resolution. So that's why I suggested that the project leads take the lead in working with the board to determine if they're, you know, what the majority is as far as moving that forward. If we are going to amend it, then at the next meeting, we would present that as amended call for a public hearing and have the public hearing.
Well, I'd like some discussion on moving RP to hosted only because I just don't think it's fair to people. The residences existed before professional uses were allowed by zoning. First, they went in by variance, so I'm curious what other board members feel on that.
I agree with that.
Okay, anybody else have an opinion?
I'm okay with that as well.
So that's three out of six.
Okay, well, this is, this is an information gathering purpose. So I think, you know, as we get to the conclusion of this, we will have to set up a secondary meeting where we'll talk about that with planning and Council. And I think the next step will be having a couple items that we will look at amending to this.
Yep. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I can't see how restricting it further would align ourselves for success when we're being guided that legally we're putting ourselves at risk by restricting it at all. So I'm having, I'm not sure where, I think I know how I'll vote on the proposed amendment. And I, I agree that I would like to not see our neighborhoods altered in any way by the use of this real estate tool that has become, whether you like it or not, part of the main state of America and the world in many instances, to represent the opposing view and I just want to make sure it's understood that I'm not advocating for it. There are times in anyone's life where you don't know what your future is going to be like and some of these real estate tools are actually exercisable to the benefit of the owner. And to distinguish the difference, a long-term rental is a one year or more, so we've got that covered. But when we don't know what that one year is going to look like, if we need something to offset the cost of water, the water bill that we get, the tax bill we get, the maintenance that's required in the homes in Niskuna, to remove that tool from the ownership may actually have an overall negative effect on the property value, potentially. So I'm just putting out there the opposing view and how the community might be looked at. It might be looked at as a huge benefit. It may also be looked at as too restrictive, not knowing what my future job career or whatever will consist of. So I just, I want to put it out there that this amendment going further in restricting another zone, it just doesn't sound right to me based on the guidance we began.
Okay, any other final thoughts?
The only final thought I make, Chris, to your point, and, you know, the legal department, Elena knows this, I have, you know, tremendous respect for legal department, but at this point, right, the whether or not we will be sued because of this code still remains a legal speculation. And we've been sued for other things and we've taken them to court and we've spent the taxpayer dollars and we've, you know, prosecuted or answer prosecutions based on the matter in front of us.
My approach, because I worked for state agency where we could be sued for just about anything and fairly often were, the threat of being sued has never been a determinant in my position. However, if I thought we didn't have a chance of winning that, that could influence my decision mightily and often did. And I got to be fairly good in that context of understanding what the courts were likely to uphold and what they weren't. This is different, it's beyond my civil service expertise and I definitely defer to Council on this. So I would not be comfortable with a total ban. I just think homeowners have, should have some flexibility. We allow home occupation uses, but we regulate it and I look at this very much the same. We don't want a residential property becoming a commercial property. And with home occupation use, we rely on the neighbors to tell us if the use has grown beyond the reasonable limits that we've set and this is going to be the same. If it gets too much, we have tools in the code that would allow enforcement and I think enforcement would be successful. And, you know, I'm.
A level of enforcement that we do not practice today.
But we do.
How do you, can you, James, you made the point a couple times, I just want to understand it.
Because today, we have a precedent of complaints being made and those all go to the police.
Right.
And the Planning Department has nothing in place because the code isn't there to respond.
The police have nothing in place.
Right, so whatever level of enforcement is done today by the Planning Department, by definition increases in a unknown magnitude if we were to implement the code as written and it'll affect all residential zones in the town.
What you're proposing wouldn't change that.
Right. It'll, if there are negative consequences of short-term rentals, it will affect no more than four hundred and thirty, forty-something properties in the town.
Why?
Because I will propose that those are the only ones.
No, but if someone, if someone out, if someone who are one, R two, R three uses the property as a short-term rental, how will that be remediated? It would be through policing it and then following up with them and going through the same process.
Right, so I'm leveraging the fact that once we have something in the code, it becomes communicated, it becomes known, and so anyone who's in R one, R two, R three that practices this, it'll immediately be a C synthesis. It's not a get it fixed in an hour, it's not, you know, we, right, it's a C synthesis.
It's an unpermitted.
An unpermitted use of the property.
As opposed to a permitted use with clarification of how it would be permitted and then the risk of losing the permit.
Aye. Right. It's three, 343 properties that exist in the town in Niskuna will be subject to hosted short-term rentals. If the proposed amendment that I've raised carries through into the text of the code. I am heartbroken to understand that that's a ban.
That's not a ban. I think it's being very, very unique, honestly.
And in fact, you know, to Ms. Gold's point, it's, it's actually some prime property there. It's almost luxury. Okay. So I mean, at which point are we going to decide to enter these proposals or not? Right? We have to.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting to take these.
Isn't this our meeting?
Yeah.
And I would expect, we would go somewhere on the next meeting and determine if we need to have another public hearing, if we're going with either of these. But I really think we need to have the vote of the board on each of these proposals. Of course, mine did not have an official second, so, and I think.
No, but that's the thing. They're not motions, right?
Well, it sounded like.
No, no, no. It, it might sound, but let's, you know, you know, the town attorney made it clear. This is, this is still textual content discussion. It's not, it's not a motion.
Well.
Right? That's why I think I said it carefully. I'm just proposing an amendment. Right? It's not something to be seconded or not seconded. Look, the only comment I can make is we're all very conscious of time. And the longer we go without a code, then things are definitely unregulated.
Exactly.
We, it's on the agenda. We're discussing it. I believe we can make a determination whether the code stays as is, whether we make an change relative to Ms. Gold's suggestion on RP, which most people seem to be in agreement with, and whether we make a change relative to my suggestion, relative to restricting it outside of R1, R2, R3.
And I think that would be too restrictive and frankly unfair. If we say we're going to allow it only in this residential neighborhood.
Unfair in which direction? Is it a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, I'll go with Mr. Laflamme's comments that some people might find doing a short-term rental a couple of times a year might make it more viable for them to stay in their homes with the higher utility bills and whatnot, although, you know, some of that higher utility bill is coming off the regular tax bill and being moved over, so.
I mean, I'm gonna.
I don't know, but that's not our discussion to have. That's the town board's bailiwick.
I don't want to confuse it. The tax bill change has nothing to do with my comment, other than it's a real estate tool that's become standard, whether we like it or not across the country. And we're removing that tool. That was my, my point.
And I would propose that there is no basis for that real estate tool that is supported in our comprehensive plan.
Right. Can I ask another question of counsel? Well, so if we were to restrict it to the three and, and not allow it in our one or two or three, and we went, and we were brought to court, uh, would it, do you have any insight on whether the penalty would be financial and therefore hit the taxpayers? Or would it might, might it just be that it is too restrictive? It's almost a ban. You need to open it up to the rest of the zoning and then that would be our chance to amend the code.
So I don't have an easy answer, answer for you. It's going to be, it depends on what the lawsuit is that's brought and if there's damages that are alleged by the person bringing it, what those damages are.
Okay. Thanks.
So essentially, we're going to give in before litigation even begins. So we're going to just say, well, we're, I'm speaking frankly.
That's a good point.
So, so we're going to essentially say, oh, okay, so we're going to make this all-encompassing and make this work so that we don't have a suit brought against us. And on the other end of that, if we go ahead and adopt these revisions that Mr. Khan has suggested and possibly take, for lack of better terms, the nuisance out of R1, R2, and R3. I, I, I'm just, I'm struggling with this, you know? I mean, we're, we're, you know, what did Mr. Hamilton say? If you don't stand for something, what do you fall for? So what, how do we, how do we make a stand? Why shouldn't we be making a stand and saying, we are at least saying this, we are allowing them here. If you don't like that, okay, then bring suit against the town and see where we go from there. I'm not encouraging it because it sounds like it's going to happen anyway, if it does happen. So can we not make a stand? Can we not say it doesn't belong here?
I won't go there. I just, I don't think it, it's fair if you live in this area or that area, you can do the hosted rental and not allow it in the other residential neighborhoods.
It's also not fair for the people at the road for me. I'm not even including myself because I don't hear what's going on. I just hear the sirens going up the side street. These people that have, and you can ask my daughter and myself, we take the pictures every Friday and Saturday night. They have 15 cars in their, in their, their driveway. I just don't think, I don't think this is fair for those people. I'm not even including me in that group. It's not fair for these folks to come here and say, we're trying to do our gardening on our front lawn and we got to see the vans pulling up and dropping people off in the Ubers. This is just wrong. This is wrong.
Which is why we're proposing.
But it's an unhosed rental at this point.
Yes.
And under the proposed ordinance, it would have to be a hosted, and I think things would change with that condition.
I think people would get around those things. And, and no matter how we try to enforce those, I think people are going to find a loophole is, is they're going to find a loophole because they always do.
So I left my trash out for a couple of days longer than I should have. And I heard about it. I think our town does a really good job at monitoring certain expectations of code and, and how we live per the seasonal and having a boat in the front lawn, too long. I, I'm not saying I'm not advocating for it. However, I just think no code is what we're experiencing. I agree with everything you said. If it were on my street and I had 15 cars pulling in with a U-Haul, you know, I, I, I totally agree. So I do, I think we do need code. My issue is not so much fear of legal action as much as it's equity. I want it to be, I really saw some value in what our planner indicated to us. And that is, you, you know, you need to look at the entire area and not make it appear like you're giving preference to one over the other. And that's probably more where I'm at with the restricting. I like it. I, I like, I like the proposal that Jengus gave. I think it's a, we're very lucky to have a board like this that is not just standing back to what we think might be the right thing to do. Uh, we're taking feedback. There has been no positive feedback. No one's come back and said, I really want to rent my home. I think they're out there, but I, but we've not gotten any of that feedback.
But isn't that interesting at the same time?
I think if it went before the town board, we might, that's where we might see that. But regardless, we haven't gotten any. We have gotten none.
Just one new thing for matter completeness, right? We did get a recommendation from the public hearing also about this minimum of seven nights. Right? I think that's probably the only solid recommendation that was made, right? So I see there's three things that we need to discuss, right? You know, maybe we can, I, I, I feel we can take the RP one off the table. I know I am in vehement agreement with Ms. Gold on that one. Right? So I would support that amendment. Others can speak up. I mean, we need, we have three things we need to make a determination as to whether they will enter into the text of this proposed code or not.
Correct. But I believe that this juncture was an information collection portion. I feel pretty strongly at this point. I would like to meet with planning and Ms. Gold to go through these three items, to talk them through, and then come back. And we understand as a board and how important this is to the town to have something enforceable. But I also agree with Ms. Gold and from what we've heard from planning that this is enforceable. It is not something that is a burden to the planning department, that they, they can take this on. They haven't entered into something that they can't handle or wouldn't be able to have a code out there that wouldn't be enforceable, which I think is extremely important. So with, with those two things, I will, you know, take down all these notes, go through this one more time, and we'll set up a meeting to get some information distributed so that everyone can see it and move this on. This, this is a process and we are, if it takes another public hearing and then it goes to the town board and there may be a new information, like, you know, Mr. Laflamme said, you might have a handful of people that come out to support this. We haven't seen that yet. We haven't seen any information from the town that this is, this is a positive thing. But again, there's, there's going to be opportunities for it. So that's my current position on, on where I stand.
Right. So Chairman Walsh, I think that's, I'm sorry, Chair there, you know, that's definitely your prerogative and I support that. And I support that hundred percent. Sorry, I have the, I have, you know, what Trish has is contagious. And so definitely, I think, having a further discussion between the project leads and the planning department and legal, I think that's fine. I mean, like I said, I've, I've put into writing, I've said, it's on the record, right? This concept of a phased approach to this, right? I do think that today, the planning department makes a judgment as to what it'll be able to enforce, right? Without knowing whether that gets multiplied by 10x or 100x. Right?
And so.
And just to respond to that, just from pure factual information, I think Laura has stated that she feels this code that the public hearing was held on this evening, she can enforce that with the staff that she has currently. She's, she's said that at a couple.
She stated that in the past. Without knowing if it's going to be a 10x increase or 100x increase. Right? I'm saying that that unknown quantity remains factually unknown until this code gets implemented and the practice becomes a practice. So, yep, I think there's three items.
Come here. Just before we re-adjourn this concept, that the one thing that was mentioned, feedback, I think from the, from the public hearing, a seven-day minimum, is that what you brought up?
Yeah, someone mentioned it in public hearing.
I, I just, just, let's debate that a little bit. If someone did have a seven-day minimum, wouldn't they just adjust the pricing so it would be equal to a two or three-night weekend stay? Like, I just think that's easily work aroundable from a marketing rental perspective.
I, I, I think the nature of the complaint was the fact that the, the complaints that were being hodge were the same complaints on multiple renters within a seven-day period.
So that way there would not be.
Yeah. At least this way, you know, if you got a set of bad renters, they come in, you complain about them once, then, you know, revoke the permit.
So that's an upside. I see.
So it's one, it's, it's one instance or two? Cause I'm, I'm getting.
Two, two instances. Sorry.
Two. We cut it from three.
What happened to one?
We have, we went down from three violations to two.
To two.
And they have to be sustained and all that stuff.
Right. The increase of the duration is if you have a holiday weekend, somebody does it, rent it on a Thursday, Friday, flip it to a Saturday to Sunday or Monday, something like that, where at least if you're, like you said, they could definitely extend what a two-day rental or three-day minimum would be to a seven-day, if they wanted to do that cost-wise, that's their.
But they would lose those other days.
That's their prerogative if they chose to do it that way.
Yeah.
So that's one of the, one of the takeaways from this, which we're going to add to our discussion notes. Okay. Any other final thoughts from anybody before we close this? All right. I want to thank.
So sorry, just, just one last thing to, to be clear. And I, right, I just, the draft that went out that the public saw, we took care of this little blip that occurred from the last meeting to now on the definition of hosted short-term rental, right?
Correct.
So, you know, but we've made clear in the text, as seen by the public, right? That the owner of the property resides at the property and that the owner of the property stays overnight during the entire term or shorter, right? No delegate, no representative, no. Okay. That's good. Just wanted to make that clear.
It's a very important piece of the code that's proposed.
And that's one that's not difficult to enforce. If you go there and no one was there, I mean, I think you'd have to allow for them to make a grocery run or something like that, but.
As long as Mr. Konezo doesn't have to go to 10 places at the same time.
Well, we do have two building inspectors.
We're not there yet.
We do have two building inspectors, so it's not quite that dire. And a part-timer. We actually have three.
All right. I want to thank everyone's time and input on this. It's, it's extremely important. So we will be working diligently to get some updates here before, on the next meeting. Okay. Moving on to the next discussion item. Uh, moving on to the next one, uh, 424 Balltown Road, site plan application for a tenant change to a Wingstop restaurant. And Ms. Strang is the project lead that's here. And do we have an applicant online? Be Mr. King?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great.
I'm also here. Jeff Levy is owner's rep.
Oh, welcome back again, Mr. Levy.
Thank you.
All right. Did you want to give a quick recap of the updates from the last meeting?
Do you want me to?
Jeff, you open items.
Well, we had, we had a request for some parking spaces. We were able to come up with six 30-minute parking spaces in front of the restaurant, immediately next to the handicap area that will provide, uh, quick in-and-out spaces for delivery drivers at that center. We are, so I have identified areas of landscaping that will be improved in the common area in and around that, uh, space. Well, not in the space, around the space. Landscaping in the space never is really good for anybody.
Was there going to be any proposed signage for that parking?
Yes, there are standard 30-minute, uh, parking signs.
Okay. And could you just recap that as well?
The signs will be placed in that hatched area, six spaces will be signs that say 30-minute parking.
Clark, if you could scroll down on the plan, there's a, a couple of snippets of the parking only signage.
Of the signs themselves?
Yeah, down in the bottom left-hand corner. Perfect. Okay. Now I'll turn it over to Ms. Strang. Any?
Yes, um, I didn't get the opportunity, um, to speak with my co-lead on this. But I, I did, I have some concerns. That's an area that I travel a great deal. And so in knowing that, I don't know how many of you have come to that intersection, there were Lowe's is at that one area, but there's stop signs on two of the intersections and, or two of the, I think it's, uh, going forward. Anyway, there's not stop signs on the other, uh, the other way. And I just, my, my thing is that I think it's a very heavily trafficked area. I have a great deal of concern with the parking spots. I think when we also look at the Grubhub and all of the other, uh, delivery, um, options there, if they're doing 80 to 90% of their businesses takeout, I can't believe those are going to be enough spaces. In addition to, you know, even if you stripe that with a, a crossing hatch or what have you, I, I think it still really poses a danger. And I didn't, I wasn't able to find, uh, your Albany store online to see where that was in relation to, uh, the strip mall that it's in. So I didn't know if it was on the end, if it was in the middle of, of, um, several stores. Even if you take that side, even if you take that side entrance to use for deliveries, you know, and that would take all of, you know, that portion of the traffic out of, you know, maybe just the Grubhub, just, you know, that service. It still doesn't, to me, I have a great concern about the traffic. I have a great concern that, I'm not sure that this is a good location for this. I just, if this was perhaps in the middle of, you know, where between Target and one of the other stores, you know, Famous Footwear, you would have to park in the, the parking lot. You would have to cross over. You could use the pedestrian, uh, walkway that Target has there. But you, you don't really have anything. You don't have a hardscape here for that. And I just, considering its location, I just have, and, and, you know, on the other end of that, I appreciate the, the thoughts of, of putting in more green space. I think that always attributes to a, a nicer-looking project. I, I just have a great deal of concern with the parking. I'm not sure it's adequate enough, even in signage. Even if you didn't sign it, even if you said that whole section of parking lot, because it's really not that utilized, I don't think. But you've got that crossing action and that just, that has a great deal of concern to me. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Well, we can certainly increase the number of spaces. We have no issue doing that. So if you'd like there to be eight or 10, I have no problem with that. We could also, um, install signage, make this an all-way stop and put in a crosswalk, uh, across towards the front of five below it. across towards the front of Five Below, if that would help.
Jeffrey, this is, ladies and gentlemen, this is Reggie, one of the owners of the Wingstop restaurant. I definitely understand a person's concern about parking spaces and whatnot. And with 90% of our business being delivery, how would it work? Our whole model is because it takes us 30 minutes to prepare someone's food because we cook fresh, whether you order one piece or 100 pieces of chicken, it's going to take the same 30 minutes. Our guest, the Wingstop guest knows that. So 90% of those, 90% people order way ahead. So when they come in, they just pull into the parking space, go into the restaurant, get their food, turn around and walk out. We've done this several times in other locations where we have the landlord give us two parking spaces because that's all we can, that's all he can afford to give up. Then we have some where we have five parking spaces. So being that this landlord is being gracious and offering six to eight parking spaces, that is way more than enough and will not cause any kind of disruption at all. Based on our previous history.
Can I just ask your, your other store that you have in Albany, it's in Westgate, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can you tell me where that is in location? Is it at, on an end?
It's on the end, it's on the end parking lot, exactly like the same way that we are with, with, with this location. It's on the end. If you go into the Westgate Plaza, we're right next door to H and R block. So, and right around the corner from the, from the diner. And honestly, right in front of our store is an entryway from the street to the, to the, inside the complex itself. And we managed to be okay there with three, with three parking spaces.
Well, again, I, you know, I, I don't think I have as much concern about the, as I said, the parking there seems to be vast. And I'm not sure on the busiest weekend at Christmas time that you're going to have, you know, not have available parking spots, my issue, and I will defer to my colleagues on the board. If you have a better sense of, of what you folks think, that crossing action with so many people crossing that area and picking up is, is where my concern is. So if, if you folks feel that that's, I'm overthinking, I've done that before.
We will, we, we will, I'm sorry to cut you off. We will not be using that side door for guests. Guests will not, every guest will be coming into the front of the store exactly like they do at Five Below. So that side door will have no foot traffic.
Yep. My bigger concern would just be not queuing up delivery trucks by the side door at, you know, daytime hours or evening hours. But again.
As, as I said last week, I'm sorry, our deliveries come two, three o'clock in the morning.
Right. And you're one of the few buildings there that doesn't have a back loading area because that's been subdivided, or at least that section of the building was subdivided with Five Below.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that would be the bigger deterrent for me would be to not have either delivery pickup, like a DoorDash or something, pull up to the side door where if you're running that out, everything come in through the front.
No, on, on the blueprints, that side door is actually in the back of our house, in the back of the restaurant. So, you know, public will not have access to that side door at all. 90% of the time, we would just have that side door for deliveries or an emergency egress. It will not be used on open, on a daily basis for employees to enter and exit.
Correct. And in fact, there's no signage on the side door at all. And that door is dedicated just for the delivery and/or for the, for the staff going in and out.
Every, every person that walks into that store, whether it be a employee or customer, guest, anyone, Santa Claus walks in, he walks through the front door. There will be no, no side of building action at all, besides delivery drivers, as I stated, at like two, three o'clock in the morning.
In my experience with restaurants recently is that the services like DoorDash, you are using the same entrance and same pickup point that I am as a single customer. And it hasn't been a problem at the places I've been to. I'm, I'm more comfortable with this than Ms. Strang is. I, I think the six parking spots are probably enough. Eight would be fine, but if you dedicate it to that use only, then you might be doing as much harm as good because, you know, flexible parking is very useful. And I just don't see any major problem from this.
I guess I, the parking isn't really as much of an issue to me as, as how busy it's going to be in terms of foot traffic. And where that intersection is, that's, that's where my concern really lies.
Well, I, I'll, I'll be 100% honest with you. Whenever we open up a new location, because we're new to the area, week one, week two, week three, it will look like 100% chaos because so many people want to come to it. It's like if, if, you know, Michael Jordan comes to town, everybody, every little kid wants to see Michael Jordan. After three weeks, it begins to level out. But the first couple, the first three weeks, yes, it will be very busy because, for instance, when we opened up in Albany, we, we opened up at 11 o'clock in the morning, we had people online at 9:30, standing outside the store at 9:30 lining up to, to come in. You know, but then now the, the, the place in Albany, we open at 11, we probably get our first customer 11:30, 11:45. That's a walking guest because it leveled out now. The, the excitement of, oh my God, Wingstop is here, finally came, is over. The town has had it and it starts to level out and business, you know, becomes normal. Just like when, if a Chick-fil-A opens up, it's going to be the same thing because it's new to the area.
As I said, I'll defer to my colleagues here.
I think, I think part of the concern that Ms. Strang's raising could be alleviated. I, I'm actually a little bit okay with the parking count, six, eight. But I think very similar to what we've done in Target, what we've done Burlington. I think for both Five Below and, and I don't think they have one, right? I'm not sure. I did not look. I think maybe a crosswalk will promote a greater safety.
At least.
Right? And actually, you know, to the gentleman raised the point, right? So like, like I said, I'm not looking at a satellite view right now, but I think controlling that intersection that crosses over to Lowe's. Right? That intersection is very loose right now. I think there's a single stop sign only for traffic coming, you know, towards the back of the mall from.
Actually two stop sign, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you can refresh my memory like the last time, but there's two. Yeah. So.
Still it's loose though. I think that's a good word for that.
Yeah. So I would recommend, you know, that we, like I said, it impacts both Five Below and just to put a crosswalk there, right? You've kind of got that precedent at Target and at Burlington. Again, at the end of the day, it's just safety for pedestrians and consumers, right? Customers.
That's where I was at.
Right? Going into these doors.
We will be happy to install a crosswalk at that location. As a matter of fact, this works out very well because that property is due to be striped this week or next week. And he can do that while he's there.
Yeah. And so is it gonna, so let's decide here's a plan board. Is it going to extend for both Five Below and Wingstop?
Well, it'll be a crosswalk available to anybody who likes to use.
Yeah. I mean, the specific details of the crosswalk, Clark, I think the planning office, planning department needs to.
Sure. We can reach out to him and work, and work on that.
Yeah, there are which requirements and such, right?
I think so. I think so.
All right. So I think with some of these comments, we're at the point where we can call for a resolution for the next meeting. Okay. Everything else seems to check out, the signage, every other aspect that we had talked about the previous meeting, everything looked to be pretty good. And you've got a good set of plans. So we'll add that to the, the next meeting, which our next meeting is September 9th.
Excellent.
All right. Okay. Thank you, and we'll see you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay. Next up is 929 Pierce Road, sketch plan application for a two lot subdivision. Welcome, Mr. Paleshi.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. So my first thought is, and Laura had sent an email earlier, that's the first time the water issue seemed to get raised. The email that Laura sent to the planning board.
Are we talking about 929?
929 Pierce.
Yeah.
Yeah, now that, that was brought up a couple of weeks ago. Laura had sent that out. She had clearly indicated that the problems were design specific for the home that was, that was causing the issues and was having an adverse effect on the neighbors. But that the, you know, that it wasn't necessarily a variety of properties. It was just that, the one property, I guess it was nine, 949 Pierce Road or 943 Pierce Road, I think it was.
Yeah, 943 Pierce Road. I mean, she, I have the, the first time I, maybe I missed it, she said it in the meeting, so I apologize. Maybe I didn't review the minutes correctly, but at least it's on the record as of Thursday.
Yeah.
And then it got reinforced by.
Tonight.
Yeah. So understanding fully well that it's 949 Pierce Road that may have caused the water issues, it still now becomes a pre-existing water condition that we need to consider, right?
Agreed. Well, Mr. Paleshi, were you able to sit in? I know you walked in partway through.
I walked in a little late, yeah, but I did hear both neighbors.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, we can look into it a little bit further. You know, that's what we do as engineers to, you know, help mitigate the situation. And, and obviously what we're proposing, making sure that, you know, we're not going to shed more discharge from our proposed development, you know? We're not allowed to do that, so we would have to control our stormwater runoff on our site, which in this latest revision that I shared with the board, I am proposing, you know, at the low point of our site where we can capture the rooftop, the driveways, put it into some sort of rain garden where it could recharge and put plantings in there, berms, so that, you know, that water could either recharge back into the ground, evaporate, or be uptaken to the, the landscaping. We've done that before on many projects, you know, small projects like this with subdivisions for single family. A lot of times rain gardens are a good feature in subdivisions. So we're willing to look at that and, and, you know, mitigate our situation so that, you know, we don't impact any further to any of the neighbors. So, yeah, this was the first time I heard about those stormwater issues.
Right.
So, yeah, so if we could continue to move forward, we'll be happy to.
Yeah, but I mean, from my perspective, it's an add-on to the original challenge with this property, which is creating, right, a flag lot of the smaller size and compared to the rest of the day, right? So we still, that's still an issue on the table. It needs to be discussed.
Correct. I mean, it's not conforming to the code. It is a smaller size than the ones that were up the road and they're not even that close. Like we talked about, there's some pros to, if, if I, if I wasn't at the last meeting, but there, there were some pros to the design in that this land, actually, the trees are already cleared. You know, there's no clearing of the trees that may create more runoff. The buffering around this, the back of this property to these adjacent houses, both on Whitehall and on, on Berkshire is very substantial. There's an old barn that is on the property that Mr. Paleshi has indicated that it may be something that we could keep and, and keep as a historic structure in the neighborhood as opposed to turn it down. So there's some, some pluses to that, but the drawbacks are flag lot. You know, we had, we had also discussed, which I don't think this board heard about, there is a slot of land to the south. It might be 50 feet. It looks like it might belong to the owner of the, the property behind or to the west of these properties. If that were added to this and it got you the 100 foot, 100 foot, then you would have to be discussing all these other things with retention, water basins, all of that, if this were to even be considered. But if that, that sliver of land is actually available to the developer, this may be the only way. It would be, you know, past the board's review because the, the comprehensive plan is very clear as to its, you know, avoidance of recreating these types of, you know, lot layouts. And the recommendation is to try to come up with a way to develop more of the vacant land, put a road through it and do it in a more traditional manner, keeping with the code. So do you have any insight or did you learn anything more about the land to the south that looks like it might be? It's not available in terms of for sale, but is it a possible option?
So, so, yeah, so I, I did. I looked into it a little bit further. I think when we were out on the site, we had pulled up an old like Onyx Hunt app and it showed a, a strip that you're referring to. But when I looked at the tax map, that is its own parcel in itself and it belongs to 911 Pierce Road. So I had reached out to the applicant, Mr. Squelia, and I brought this to his attention. I said, we had this conversation and if they could contact that neighbor to see if there's any availability to purchase land. And he was going to do that. He was going to get back to me before tonight's meeting if he had any headway. I haven't heard from him, but I'm assuming he is making contact and hopefully we can know one way or another whether they are willing to, you know, sell a portion of that. All we need is 10 feet, right? The frontage of this property is 190 feet. And, you know, if we can obtain 10 feet, even if it's just a triangular piece to get the frontage, then we meet the code. And if we were to go that route, we could move the line, we could, you know, bisect this parcel kind of centered of the parcel and have two lots and move the houses closer to Pierce Road where they're fronting similar to other houses on Pierce Road. But we felt that, and, and I think, you know, you can agree to this, when we did our site walk, that this is a unique piece of property and we felt that having that house back there really had a nice setting. You know, so, so this was our initial thought was, yeah, we are creating that keyhole lot and, and, you know, we're proposing the 55.2 foot of frontage. But when you look at the overall, we're only, only short 10 feet. And I know Laura looked back and, and gave us an analysis of, you know, all the other flag lots and, you know, went through the whole average density and whatnot. And when I took a second look at that, you know, I know like half of those lots didn't require a variance and some, and the other half did require a variance. And when you look at the other lots that did get approved, that obtained the variance, you know, the, the smallest frontage was 25 feet and it went up to 60.19 feet. And then the other one was 20. So if you took the average of that, it's a little less than if you took the average of the other keyhole lots that didn't need a variance. So I think we're sort of there, you know, when comparing what's already established on the street. And, you know, again, if, you know, we walked it and we felt there was a good, good setting, you know, proposing what we're trying to propose here. But I guess at the end of the day, if we can obtain 10 feet, we tear that house down, we put a line right in the middle and we conform to the lots, you know, we could still get the two lots. So I'm trying to work with the board to, to, to make it more of a unique project than just, you know, do a, a two lot subdivision, have the houses up front. You know, this, this really, you know, suits itself having that house back there because for the reasons we discussed last time, you know, it, it's, it's far enough back where you're not even going to see the house from Pierce Road. It sits lower in grade than, than Pierce Road. So there's a lot of benefits and yeah, there, there are some cons, I think, you know, but I think we can mitigate those.
So I guess, I think you might've answered the question. The driveway on the existing property that shows beyond the boundary line going to the south, that's in anticipation of maybe purchasing?
No.
Or is that consistent with what's there?
No. So we, this, this is just sketch plan.
Okay.
This was taken off of an old survey map. That driveway that was on the southern property line, that's how the driveway used to be.
Okay.
Okay. And if you go out there today, that driveway to the south is no longer there. And that neighbor actually planted some pine trees or spruce trees right along that. Like they removed the driveway and, and put some sort of, you know, tree buffer along that line.
It, it just seemed like an odd detail that you're outside the boundary line.
Yeah.
What was there? So I understand now, at least you were trying to capture.
Right. And, and I can certainly update that to, you know, to get more realistic. But without some sort of concept, sketch approval, you know, we didn't want to go the extra mile and get the survey done yet. You know, we kind of want to have this discussion and understand before we really, you know, spend the time and money in, in detailing with surveys and whatnot. So, so that, that's, that's what, you know, where we got that information from was from an old survey map. And that's how the aerial shows it too.
Okay.
Maybe just to address Mr. Khan's question.
Maybe just to address Mr. Khan's question about drainage. I think Laura did mention that this, this area in general has some drainage challenges from, for the reasons that. The, the two women spoke about earlier this evening. The, the house that they were referring to, nine forty-three, that's at the top of the page there where the soil is all disturbed.
Yeah, I'm saying with that grinder name.
Yeah, that's, that was when it was under construction. So Ms. Cashmere, her property is just off the page immediately. Upward from that.
That's.
And it generally, the grade generally runs pretty substantially towards her house. Ms. Rockwell is the property to the immediate left of that.
Twenty-four, twenty-four eighty-eight.
And it runs quite severely down towards her property to the left, so just. Just to put that in context.
There was one confusion between Laura's email and so the, the. The alleged. Culprit for drainage. Problems was nine forty-three Pierce Road, right? Not nine forty-nine.
Correct.
Correct.
Nine forty-nine was.
Nine forty-nine is Ms. Cashmere, right?
Yeah.
Well, let's just verify, right? That's. Okay.
So I have a question.
Sounds like. I have a question for, for Clark. It may be more enforcement, enforcement, but. Since this is a relatively new build, but it has transferred ownership. With that building application, wouldn't there be anything enforceable if they had to put in a swale or maintain something? Is that something that the town can retroactively go back and enforce if that wasn't constructed per, per plans?
For which property is that?
For, for nine forty-three.
For nine forty-three, I would defer to Matt and the engineering group because I know they have looked at that. Extensively, a year or so ago.
Right. So. I mean, not, not to put the burden on to a brand new owner, but they might have inherited something that. A, wasn't constructed correctly, maybe never got enforced, but now has all these other attributes that are. Downstreaming to other properties. And unfortunately, you're now part of the conversation where you're adjacent to it and. And maybe mitigating or adding to an existing condition. I, I think that's worth looking into just to see. What may or may not be enforced.
I mean. So going back to this issue, right, I think. Our discussion is gonna need to continue with some kind of assessment of what the drainage is. And what, what the problem is and what the mitigation solutions would be. And even so, right, the board still has, I think, a somewhat independent decision to make. On whether we're gonna accept a lot that looks like this.
Correct. My perception when walking the land was that the proposed house location is actually. At the lowest point, including. Lower than the homes that, you know, Denise's or Nadia's on Brookshire. I don't know if that's true. Do you have any insight on the elevations?
Yeah, we, we are like the, the, as far as stormwater runoff, we are lower than those two or three properties, I should say. Yes.
So you'd be inheriting a tremendous amount of runoff. Especially with all the work that was done on that home to try to redirect the water come from.
No, hang on, I mean, according to the topo map, you're between three thirty-two and three twenty-eight.
Right, that's where the house is situated.
That's where the proposed house, right?
But, but everything drains to the northwest corner, which is situated at three twenty-four. Which would be lower than.
Yeah, and then it continues to the properties, so three twenty-four and three twenty-two runs into. Those properties in Brookshire.
There's a natural low point right at that northwest corner of the property.
Right.
The northwest corner.
Yep.
Yeah, and that, and that's where I would propose to put our stormwater and control any of the water upstream and our proposed impervious. And, you know, my understanding too, from the conversation that in regards to the. The drainage, their previous drainages, you know. Were the issues really only during construction, you know? Or, or is it current today?
It's still current.
Okay.
It seemed from the feedback.
There was some additional issues due to non-maintenance and sediment control of the site.
Okay.
That the homeowner, the old homeowner was cited for and taken to court and fined. But then there were additional.
Okay.
Issues, especially with respect to. Ms. Cashmere's basement.
Understood.
So the town has taken actions on this already?
On the fore, the former homeowner, yes.
Okay, I've got a process.
Was it closed or?
It's closed currently, yes. They ended up having to pay thousands of dollars in restitution.
Right, but. But Ms. Cashmere nor the Rockwells saw any benefit from that, right?
The Rockwells did because we had. We had an expert that could show that the, I mean, if you looked at the pictures, it was like. There's a stream that went right into their backyard. It was very clear. With Ms. Cashmere's, you know, she basically. And I have no reason to doubt her whatsoever, but, you know, she was getting flooding in her basement, starting with the construction that she never had before. We had a very wet season at that time, but it is my understanding that that's continued. Regardless, at the time that it was being litigated, it was difficult. We didn't have an expert that could actually. Tie the water to, of Ms. Cashmere's basement to the construction and the lack of sediment control. But it was much more clear with the Rockwells, so the Rockwells did receive that money.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
I have a process question. If we grant. Site plan approval. Would this project get a TD? I know it's a minor subdivision, but. To me, I think.
I think it absolutely would, given the, the stormwater conditions and the, the soil, it absolutely would.
Right, so we can hearken back to Seneca and I think I would recommend that we do the same practice here. I mean, that's a key thing that happened, right? That's why I'm careful with the words. There's, it's become clear now. Due to whatever reason happened with previous construction. There is a, there is a water and drainage issue.
Yeah, we're, we're aware of that and, you know, we'll certainly do the assessment, but as long as we're, or my applicant isn't responsible for fixing something. On that property, right? Like, you know, there, there's, you know, we have to do what we have to do. If water is flowing onto our property, then now we have to take care of it and do what we have to do so we don't impact further properties downstream.
You're, there is gonna be a TDE-based study that's gonna need to happen, right?
Understood.
For us to be able to make that decision.
And the requirement is that you not make anything worse. And if you can. Help make things better, we don't disapprove that.
Right, yeah, we, we always try to do that.
But again, and, you know, I, I got this habit of repeating to. We still have the shape of these lots to contend with.
Yep.
We would actually welcome any improvement you can add. Okay, knowing that there will be a TD, I'm a little more comfortable with looking at this.
Right, but in order to get a TD, we would have to accept a sketch plan. Right?
Yeah.
We may not get there.
Yeah, we may not, yeah, we may not, that's the point I'm making, right? We may not. Yeah.
But there is another option that you're entertaining.
Correct.
About possibly. Acquiring some property and then making conforming lot sizes.
Yeah, so just keep that in mind. If, if additional property was acquired, you know, then. You probably, we probably would steer away from this situation, this layout that you see, which. In my opinion, I think is the best.
Yeah. It may actually be best from a runoff and water control perspective as well. So. To add more complexity to the uncertainty of the direction of this. Even if he had enough frontage. There's an old house there that could be renovated and maybe sell for three hundred something. Versus tearing it down and having two houses new, both on Pierce, creating more stormwater toward the northwest. At five, six hundred thousand dollars, right? So if this town had the, this board had the ability to retain a more affordable home in this design by. Allowing the shape of the lot being slightly non-conforming or a setback not, not being met. That may be a consideration. Or putting a house in the back still, but having. A hundred foot, a hundred foot of frontage may be another option. So it, it, again, it's all. Speculative. We don't even know if the other land is available.
Right.
But I'm, I'm also, I'm, I'm really interested in, in keeping a more affordable house. In Niskuna if possible, and especially one that's probably almost a hundred years old. It, it, old farmhouse. It's a pretty unique looking house.
Yeah.
But it's in the wrong spot, potentially.
Right.
So I think we have more to learn, you know. The feedback and the study that was done by Clark and all of, all of that, even though you bring up a good point in terms of what's a comparative. To down the road, it's still a very small area. To squeeze another, you know, non-conforming spaghetti lot or deal with spaghetti lot with a, with a keyhole lot. We're not, I, I can speak for myself. I'm not in favor of, of creating more of those in Niskuna for, for my own reasons, but. But if we did, I do think this particular lot has buffers in the way the land lies. And the visibility and the impact around to the neighbors, visible, audible, and even water-wise, I think. It's, it's a pretty good situation.
I prefer conforming lots, you know that. And I still have an issue with putting one house way behind where. You know, heaven forbid, there's a problem and nobody can see that there's a problem.
Yeah, no.
I mean, one of my things is. If I go out and fall down on my property, I've got neighbors who can see me.
And you have the right to choose a neighborhood where you can live and be seen.
I have a very close family member who's got a situation where. Could be down on the ground for days without being observed by anybody. And that's, I find that a very scary proposition.
Alright, okay.
Well, I think from a realtor's perspective. A lot of people do not find that situation attractive.
Yeah.
So it does go to the, the value of the home.
Yep.
Clark, I apologize and we can probably do it for next time or during the week. I can't recall what we did with the Nugent property. The one that has actually a smaller. Frontage. It was, it was, it was in front of us within the last few years.
I, I think it's later, it's listed as one of those.
Eight fifty-nine. Eight fifty-nine. Yeah, no, no, it's there, but I remember. We acted on. An application.
I think we reviewed it, but I don't know if we actually.
We can, we can dig that up. Eight fifty-nine Pierce?
Yeah, eight fifty-nine, right? I know that one we did. And did we do something else with eight seventy-five? I was just gonna go back to my old records of. Maybe you just need to do all that research.
Do they show up in the table that we created where?
They are.
It explains the original lot size and what they were subdivided into.
Well, yeah, the, yeah, the original was there and then what they were subdivided.
I was the lead on that one.
Yeah. So we actually accepted that?
Yeah, the, I believe the lot behind it has a driveway that's tucked in. There were a couple of large trees on one side.
It's that, yeah, right there. It's the green one that's above in the picture. You just scroll up a little bit, it might ring a bell.
Yeah, just to point out the frontage of both lot A and B, right? You're at a hundred and fifty feet. We're proposing a hundred and ninety here.
You know, I, yeah, that's, I mean, that's, that's why I wanted your fairness, right? And I know that's something we, uh. Might be one of, I just wanna revisit our decision there, maybe.
It's also not among. At adjacency, you know, it, it's off a little bit. And there's a, there's a conservative nature in, in this board to not go too far off. With these types of approvals because there's lots of opportunities for locked land being unlocked with. Twenty-five foot.
Yep. It's far enough, it's far enough away.
It's far enough away.
Far enough away. That's what Mr. Flubs said.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah.
Thank you, some takeaways from this?
Yep, do a little more research and. I'm assuming we'll be back on the September meeting. Hopefully I can get some info and.
Yeah, the next one is September ninth.
Okay.
And we have implemented a ten-day period for applications for updated information, so just reach out to Clark.
Okay.
Or Laura, when she gets back, but he can give you the deadline for when we need to get the next information to make the ninth packet.
Okay.
Understood.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's never easy, right, Luigi?
Never easy, you're right. Have a good night.
You're good for it. Thanks.
Uh, next up is seventeen sixty-nine Union Street. Capital Cardiology, a site plan application for a tenant change. And do we have anyone for the applicant online?
I believe we do. Briggs, are you still on the line?
You probably have to unmute yourself.
Briggs, are you on the line still?
Okay.
He's not.
Okay, well, we can summarize. This is a tenant change. And it is. On, let's see, Union Street here, so. It is. Oh, we have someone?
Hi, this is Briggs Montero with Albany Medical Center. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I've been sitting through this meeting and I finally get my chance to talk and that thing dies on me. I'm sorry.
It happens.
Well, I apologize for that. Um, like I said, my name is Briggs Montero. I'm representing what is happening over at seventeen sixty-nine Union Street. Albany Med is currently leasing that entire building. And. Recently, we've had Capital Cardiology take over some of the responsibilities for cardiology services in the building. And I think what kind of added some confusion was in that planning process, they went to the town to talk about some signage. Clark reached out to me or to Albany Med to kinda make sure that we were coming to the town. Planning board to discuss what was actually happening. So that's what brings me here tonight. The long and the short of it is the changes that are being discussed involve. Again, Capital Cardiology providing cardiology services in a space that was previously providing cardiology services to the community. There's no planned renovations to the space. They occupy existing space. And no changes to the parking lot load. As mentioned, the signage request is being pulled back. They are not proposing any signage for the face of the building. So hopefully it's an easy notification of a new tenant in the building.
Any change in hours? Or what will the hours be?
Uh, no change in hours. Right now it's seven thirty AM to five PM. Uh, the urgent care currently runs a seven-day-a-week schedule. This would be less involved than that. The urgent care is over on the west side of the building. Capital Cardiology would be entering and exiting through the east end.
Okay. Um, traffic flow remains the same. Correct?
Traffic flow remains the same, yes, and the parking remains the same. We have parking on the west, east and the north. Places of the building, nothing on the Union Street side. And there's additional overflow parking that was arranged with the church on the adjacent parking lot, so no changes to parking.
On the site plan that has the hatching on it, there is, there's a conference room in the back that shows a door that goes into what be the emergent care space. Is that any shared office space in there or is that hatch actually the delineation line between everything?
That hatch is the delineation, the, excuse me, the delineation line between everything. It was blocked off from the urgent care, so you don't have access from one tenant space into the urgent care anymore. Capital Cardiology is planning to do some kind of a small radiology unit. For diagnostic work that they do. That would be a future plan that would come to the town of Niskuna for review as part of the building department. Application process.
Any other? Thoughts or questions? No? Okay. Alright, um, looks like it's very straightforward, so I think we can call for a resolution for next meeting. For attending. And, uh. Get this one, get this one wrapped up.
Yep, I do wanna thank the planning office for, for getting it in there, for bringing it to the right order.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, sorry we missed that one, but we're, we're ahead of it. And if there's anything else you need from us, I'll follow up with Clark.
Okay, alright, uh, we appreciate that. And we are looking, we don't have a project lead. I know it's pretty straightforward. If anybody wants to. Step up to take that, just let us know and we'll list that on the next one. Okay.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Have a good night.
So that wraps up discussion items. Onto reports. Turn it over to Mr. Henry.
Uh, we have nothing to report.
Okay, good. Commissioned business. We'll just go down the. Commission business, we'll just go down the board here, is anybody has anything?
I don't have anything. There's some trainings that are coming up. I just saw HVCC that I almost always go to that one. It's kind of quick and easy, but you have to take time off of work during the week, unfortunately.
I'm waiting to find out if I'm available or that one or not.
Yeah, October 18th, I think it is.
If. It's what, October 18th?
Eighteenth, I think it's a Friday. Yep.
I think I have company coming in from out of town, so I might not make it.
Just brought.
If I find out I can, I will do so. Would love to carpool in that event, but.
Actually, I, I apologize, just one clarification question I can't find it. This one's easy, no debate, going back to the short term rental code. I, I don't see a clear description of limiting the number of short term rentals. Is it in there?
You mean the, the length of the state, how many?
No, 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 how many short term rentals will allow in the town? I thought we had discussed that.
Like a maximum permit type of?
Yeah, number of permits.
I can check, I'm not sure that there is something in there.
Yeah, I'm just words, we had discussed it, right? It was, words were said concerning that topic, but it never made it to that. Okay. I, I'm frisically searching for it here with keywords and reading and I.
I don't believe it's in there.
I could have had an oversight, but, um, okay.
I don't think so, I don't think we agreed to do it.
Was it limit, not number of actual rentals, but number of rentals that a person can do in a year?
Yeah, I saw that, that's there in terms of a single property.
Okay.
But in terms of townwide, I don't believe we agreed to do that.
Yeah, I don't think that is currently in there, but we'll, we can check.
Okay, we'll add that to the discussion item.
Yeah.
Just to confirm.
What was the limit per house though? Did you say you pulled that up?
Oh, I can go back and search to, okay, get back to that text. Eight, yeah, eight is the, eight is the garnet count.
Individuals, not including the owners, my understanding.
Yeah.
So eight stays. Oh, no, I meant number of permitted uses in a year. Was there a restriction on, if a permit's granted to address, you know, 18 Union Street, they can only rent it out 20 times in a year. Was there any restriction like that?
No.
No.
No, no restriction like that.
And we did not set a limit townwide either.
Right.
But we'll, we'll just confirm that since it's been brought up.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Sorry that came late stage there, just, yeah.
Okay. So if there's, uh, no other commission business, we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Laflamme?
Second.
Second by Mr. Khan, all in favor, save by saying aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Okay. Meeting is concluded at eight 55 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.